Good evening, West Orange. This is Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer. Welcome to the West Orange Solid Waste and Recycling Collection Public Hearing. We are live in council chambers and we will be here from 6:30 to 8:30. At this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our presenter, Mr. Wayne DeFeo. Wayne, take it away.
Thank you, Joe. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Public Information Session tonight. This is designed to try to answer your questions regarding the solid waste and collection bid and the different variables that that bid offers. Before we go to Q and A, what I wanted to do was give you a brief overview of what the options are that we're looking at and why we're looking at those options and what can happen. The basis of I'm going to do a very short PowerPoint, mostly pictures, because I think pictures tell a better story than words usually do. And it will give you an idea of why and what we're looking at. And then really what I'm here to do tonight is to try to open this up for questions from you so that I can try to answer those questions. And if you have concerns, I try to address some of those concerns. This is on a go-forward basis, although I will certainly try to answer questions about something that may or may not be occurring today. I'm not here every day, but we do have Michael Fonzino here from the Health Department. I will take notes. We'll have this recorded, of course, and we'll look into any issues that we can. Essentially, this is how, this is, some of these pictures are actually from West Orange. This is how your recycling and solid waste can look at the curb today. This is not unusual in a community that does not have a cart system. Now, I know some of you have had concerns about carts overall. And let me explain that on a national level and in other places of New Jersey as well, a lot of New Jersey, we are seeing that carts are becoming the norm, and they're becoming the norm because they help to prevent this kind of an image from taking place in a town. What's wrong with this image? Well, I think some of that's obvious. I don't think I have to explain it, right? Which is why I say a picture is worth more than just any words. Part of the problem is not so much that it's plastic bags that we've gotten to over the years, of course. It's that anything can open that bag. And I'm sure you have seen animals ripping the bags open at some point or another in the history of the collection in this township. Again, let me point out to you, West Orange is not unique in this regard. You are not the only people in the world who have animal problems with their garbage. If you were in Sussex, Warren, Hundredan, any of the more rural counties, you would have obviously bear eating through the garbage, which you've had some instances, even where I live, we've had that. It's not unusual to see that. And you may have read, of course, there were bear just in the South Mountain Reservation about two weeks ago that the police had to shoot because it had gone after them. I'm not trying to scare you. I'm not saying bear are running through West Orange eating your garbage. That's not the case. But clearly, plastic bags invite all animals, from rodents to raccoons, skunks, you name it. Dogs, if a dog is loose, it will go through that. Again, there we go. This is in a commercial sector. I have tried to block out any identifiers from the images as best I can, not looking to pick on anybody. But this isn't a fault. This isn't saying someone's doing something wrong necessarily. This is just the system that's currently in place. And I think it's important for you to see those images. I probably don't have to show you these pictures. You live here. You see it. Again, a residential unit, plastic bags out. This is an issue. In the commercial sector, again, you have a litter basket being used. It's open, very easy to get into. And again, another commercial image, the same situation where you have things getting out of hand. And of course, this can get really out of hand. We're not getting in again. We're not placing blame. We're saying, is there a way to improve this? So, the township asks, can we look at alternatives when you go to bid, when we go to bid, to see if there is anything that we can do to improve the situation? Understand that change is never easy when you're changing a system that you are used to. And understand in any community where a town has looked to change the way solid waste and/or recycling is collected, there are always questions. And I would expect if there were none, I might be more concerned than if there aren't. Even this week, I was in another community where they're deciding, do they want garbage collection? They currently don't have it. They have subscription service, which most of the state geographically has, where you pay as an individual for your own company to come pick that up. That's what I have. The town is wondering, should we even go to municipal collection? Now, I say this somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but I would say if a town wants to save the most money, and I'm not recommending this by any measure, you simply stop garbage collection and everybody in town is on their own. You'd save a lot of tax dollars, but you'd pay a lot of individual dollars. And you would have an interesting situation. Again, same situation. Now, these are actual cart images being done in communities, obviously not in West Orange. But I've tried to pick images of communities that are similar demographically to West Orange to give you an idea of what this would look like. The concept here, you would use either blue or black carts or gray carts. The color is totally irrelevant, by the way. You can have any color you want in carts. But if you standardize the carts, the blue is typically recycled nationally. I don't remember why. For some reason, blue became the recycling color for buckets and carts. I should remember why, but I don't. In this case, although they're a bit scattered, it certainly is neater than the bags. This would have been post-collection. Same thing here. Again, somewhat post-collection. And these are these typical carts that I see in front. We did bring samples of carts just to show you what a cart looks like. Every manufacturer of these carts, and there are many companies that make these, they all look essentially the same. They might be a slightly different tweak in the lid or a slightly different tweak on how they're made, but for practical purposes, they're identical. Here's a very nice set out. And this is what generally happens after the initial shock of going to carts and making a change takes place. This is normally how you start to see that set out in a community. And it really depends, every community is different on how they do this. Every community has different concerns. Some concerns are, is it hilly? Well, yes, they work on hilly communities. I've worked with several communities that do that. One is in the Poconos, which as you can imagine is somewhat hilly. They have no issues. The city is going to jump west coast for a second. The city of San Francisco, you get three carts per home. And if you've been to San Francisco, I think you can attest that it's fairly hilly. And they work just fine. The carts are designed to withstand, a question that someone asked me the other day, I think it was in West Orange. Well, what if we get high winds? Remember, was it Saturday? So when was that? Monday, we had all those high winds, right? The carts are typically designed not to tip, if they're full, they're not going to tip over very easily, no matter what. But even empty, they generally won't even move until the winds hit the 40 or 50 mile an hour mark. We get a hurricane, someone, what about a hurricane? Well, all bets are off. But what would your garbage be doing in a hurricane? If it wasn't in a cart? When you're going to carts, the concern is what kind of trucks can they service West Orange? Well, there are basically two ways that trucks work in to collect carts. The one on the left is called a side loader or a fully automated loader. That has a one-person crew, the robotic arm reaches out, grabs a cart, dumps it, and puts it back. That is not going to work everywhere in West Orange. It will work in some parts of West Orange, but not all of West Orange. And this is not unusual for communities that convert to carts. Example, Middletown, New Jersey converted to carts. And they have community areas that are very densely populated with on-street parking and areas where it's more rural. He used two different trucks. The truck on the right is a typical, what you're used to seeing is a garbage truck. It has a device on the back which they call a cart tipper. Every garbage truck made in this country and is on that is on the road today can have a cart tipper on it. It's a very easy add-on if it's not already there. You would probably see one or both kinds of trucks in your town. I can't tell you which. That would be up to the contractor. That would be their decision to make. If they don't have the truck on the left, certainly understand that they may not want to make that investment. Those are very expensive vehicles. Someone asked me the other day, that truck on the left, brand new today, probably between $350,000 and $400,000. If they don't have one, they probably aren't buying one because they can convert the other truck very inexpensively. Why look, why am I stressing this image of carts? Because I want you to compare and see in your mind's eye the difference between some of the images that I showed you earlier and what cart systems can do for a community. In my experience over the years, I am seeing more and more communities moving to carts. When I work with communities, I encourage them to go to carts because I know it's cleaner, neater, easier, and safer. And the safer part goes to the contractor, to the person on the back of the trucks. One of the most dangerous jobs in this country is being on the back of a garbage truck. I know this will shock you, but sometimes people overload their garbage cans. Sometimes people put things like bricks and concrete in the bottom of garbage bags. And the hauler doesn't know this until they go to pick it up. In the private sector, private companies generally attempt to service up to 600 homes per day. I defy anyone here to pick up a 50-pound bag 600 times. And in this heat. So why are people going to carts? The companies like it because it saves them on injuries. People, they need fewer people to do the same work. And they can't get people. How many of you have businesses in this town? How many find it easy to find people to hire today? You're not, you're not having an easy time. Well, do you think it's easier to find someone? Hey, I have a job for you paying maybe $20, $22 an hour to be on the back of a truck in 95-degree heat picking up people's garbage? It's not the easiest sell. You can make almost that much at a Starbucks, a Wawa, or anything else. This helps on a lot of levels to clean things up. Now, you're not bound to this, and I am stressing here all the positives. It's cleaner, it's more efficient, you tend not to get as much litter because if the wind's blowing, the lid is down. The lid does not blow up easily. It tends to contain odor because the lid is down. I'm not saying it won't smell when you tip it. Garbage is still garbage. But it keeps the odors down, especially in the commercial sector. It's going to keep odor down. And odor is a good thing. Keeps rodents down, keeps animals down, meaning animal intrusion to get the into the cart. And I say they are animal resistant. So do understand, there's no such thing as a raccoon-proof anything in the planet. Actually, there are some, but they're steel and they're very expensive. But they help to reduce it. Squirrels are notoriously creative. Anyone try to keep a squirrel out of a bird feeder? Not easy to do. And I've seen them eat through the carts over time. That can happen. It doesn't always happen. And if you put it out regularly, it's not an issue. You had four options. The township requested that we think about different ways to do the same job. I like the term that someone used earlier. Option number one is the control bid. It's what you do today. It's everything you're used to today. And if you, anyone has been on any of the Zoom presentations that we've done for the past year and a half, roughly, between the Township Committee and before and after the bid, you've heard me say this, and I'll say it again tonight because it gives you information again. If you want things the way they were, you have to be ready to pay more money. If you want to try to contain things or improve things, you might pay a little more or you might pay a little less. When I say pay a little more or pay a little less, don't get confused by meaning the price is going down from what it was five years ago. Has anyone seen their prices go down for things you're buying from five years ago? Because if you have, please let me know where that is so I can go shopping there too. Prices go up. This is what we call containing costs. Trying to control the increase. Think of it like putting LED lights in your house. Your electric bill might still have gone up, but how much more would it go up? If you didn't do that. And that's what we're talking about here. So option one was your control. We know what those numbers are. Option two is a little bit of a tweak. Okay, what if we change a few things? We want the improvement of the carts to make the town look better, but we still want to have essentially much of what we have today. The commercial stays in effect. Your weekly bulk stays in effect. But let's tweak that just a little bit and say, let's do bulk with reservation. Okay? What does that mean? Bulk with reservation means that you would contact the hauling company in advance of your collection day. If it's number two, option two. And you would say, hey, I have three pieces of bulk as I'm allowed to put out, and I am at such-and-such address. Come pick that up. Gets into a system and they send the truck to do that. Why go to reservation? Because we have found in studies in other towns and in other communities that have done this, most people don't put bulk out every week. But if you have no reservation, the truck has to drive all over the town looking for it. In this way, by making the reservation, and that can be by phone or internet, it'll be either technology, then they have a specific list, they can plug it into their truck route and only go to the houses where they have to move to collect the bulk. That reduces the amount of trucks running through your town. In communities where we've done this, we went in one community of 7,000 homes. They went to bulk by reservation. They kept it weekly. The first week of collection from bulk, they had 57 reservations. That truck only had to go to 57 homes. That helps to save some money, and that's reflected in the bid price. Other than that, there isn't really a whole lot of change between what you have today and option two. As you move on, we said, okay, what's the other area? When we were asked, what other areas can we possibly look to contain costs? Well, one of the other areas is frequency of collection, right? Anytime, come on in. Hold on, I'll come in anytime you want. Don't worry about it. Go ahead. Welcome. The other element is frequency of collection. Every time someone comes to your house, it costs money. The more often someone comes to your house, the more money it costs. So we could look at how often the garbage gets collected. Today, you went twice a week, so we looked at the optional once a week. Does that save money? Well, you can see that in fact, it, well, you don't see it here. I'll show it to you later. But yes, once a week tends to do it. This doesn't have carts. It's a little bit different. Okay? We do have no commercial collection here, and we have one time per month bulk. And then option four, which is similar to option three, it's actually virtually identical, except we would give you carts. Option four cuts the most services down, and therefore it ends up being the least expensive bid. Now, the Township Committee asked that we get some answers for them. They had lots of questions, as you probably do right now. And I hope you're jotting down more if you're thinking about it while you're sitting here. And so we did a quick survey of what's done in the county of Essex, partly to understand the impact on commercial, because option three and option four, one way to cut costs is we wouldn't provide commercial collection. So the question is, what does everybody else do? It's a little small, but thankfully in this screen, thank goodness you have a big screen. I couldn't figure out how to make it, make it bigger and get it all up there. But these are all the towns in Esses County. The first column is what towns in Esses County provide commercial garbage collection? And as you can see, virtually, most are no. The vast majority of communities in this county do not provide for the commercial collection of garbage. In Livingston, they do small commercial. That would mean the corner shop. It maybe has an apartment above. And Nutley, they have partial commercial, where again, you have apartments up here and you have some small commercial shops down below, they provide that collection. Orange does, and Verona, and of course you, as of today. I didn't do that. Did you do that? I was getting scared there for a minute. I thought we had to pull the guys. All right? So you can see that most communities don't do commercial collection. You do. I'm not saying you shouldn't, and I'm not saying not to, but clearly that adds a cost. It is an area where there is an additional cost. Now, the second column and the third column are almost irrelevant, except that in Livingston, where they pick up small commercial, they limit their small commercial similarly to what a homeowner would be limited to, three 32-gallon carts per business, bags, I'm sorry, or containers, period. That's it. That is a strong limitation. The carts, well, that doesn't really matter because if they're not picking it up, the answer is it doesn't matter. Nutley, however, is currently out to bid where they do provide small commercial collection. Their only bid option is with carts. So small commercial, which will remain in Nutley, just so you know, they're not looking to cut commercial at this point because again, they have too many small stores above with apartments above. Everybody will get a cart in Nutley if they award the contract, period. There is no discussion with or without. The last column, which really is the more important one to your perspective, is most communities in Esses County do still maintain twice-a-week collection. Okay, the only exceptions are those communities such as Essex Spells, Maplewood, and South Orange where the homeowner picks because they have subscription service. They don't have municipal collection. So the homeowner can pick twice a week or once a week. And they pay accordingly for the service. That's a bit brief summary. Now, last question I'll try to answer in advance, and then we'll get to your questions and come up, and we can have this more of a discussion. What about rear yard collection? Well, most of us don't have rear yard collection. I could have it if I want to pay for it. And we built that into the bid. And it's structured, it's totally optional. If a homeowner wants to pay for rear yard collection, the price is prefixed. There's no negotiating. That's the price. I'm not saying you want it, but you can have it, and it's based on distance. Yet the more they hit, the further in they have to go, the more you pay. Again, because that's time, and time is money. That's normally how that works in most communities that I've worked with that have gone to rear yard collection in a bid. It's all based on distance. Now, that's a bit of a summary of everything that we've done and why we looked at all of these different options. So I'm going to pull this chart back up just because it's the four things we looked at. Again, to understand that your township elected official said, let's look and see what we can do. What are our choices? And what makes the most sense? Well, based on discussion and working on a consensus, this appeared to make the most sense, and these were the bids that we went out to get. We did receive three bidders. It had three bidders. We received three bids. One had to be discharged immediately because it was legally flawed. We could not accept it because they did not bid all four options. The second bid was the highest cost for all four options. So no matter what, he couldn't win the bid. He was there. He gave a good price in some respects. He wasn't much more on what you do today. He was pretty competitive. And we did check as to why did he give such a much higher price than the other bidder? He said, I don't know West Orange well enough, and I can't gamble and lose. Well, I can't argue with a business person for that one because you can lose a lot of money on these contracts if you don't know what you're doing. And the third bidder was the apparent low bidder, which happens to be your incumbent service provider. Some respects, I mean, he knows the township better than anybody. So we have the three bids. We have the four options. Your elected officials now have to make a choice as to which option to award. On a pure dollar basis, the fourth option is the lowest cost, no matter how you look at it. The Did I do that? And then the option two is the closest to what you have, but gives you carts if you want to do it, but keeps your commercial in place. So now what I'd like to do is open this up for questions. And then you have to come to the mic, right? Yes. So if you want to come to the mic and say your name. I didn't want to take my time to That's, I suppose.
If we're taping this, yes, we can put it on the, we can put it on the website. We could, we could, yeah, we can put this on, yep.
Yes, sir.
I really didn't want to get on this avenue, but you really presented something and asked for questions and answers and not enough data. What's the delta between the four options? It's like telling me you're going to sell me a car.
Uh huh. You want all the numbers? Is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, at least some numbers for cost. I mean, you can't ask people to do this without numbers.
Okay.
It doesn't make sense to me.
But before I'm gonna
And this is not A reflection of what's here. I'll ask questions later, but I just want to make
I'm going to put the numbers up for you. I do want to, I do want to make sure you understand. I'm going to put the delta up for you right now. I'm going to put the slide up. Yeah, but I just want to preface, preface the delta by making sure you understand there are two things to worry about, let me rephrase that. Two things to think about when you think about numbers. There's an absolute delta, which is all this is going to show you. But it does not show you the non-tangible benefits. Just so you understand that. In other words, if you want to improve something, you've got to invest. If you don't want to invest, that's your call as your town. Let me get to that slide. Okay. This chart will give you what you asked for, and that's the absolute delta. In what you're doing today, your current price, what you were paying for the last five, this past contract cycle, is this is a five, by the way, this is a five-year number. But understand that the way the new bid is written, you're only locked into the service for three years. The township would have a unilateral right in year four to terminate the contract for reasons that it would have to cite, but it could do that. So understand, I'm giving you a five-year number because that's what I have to do when I do an analysis. Your absolute delta is $18.5 million over five years to do everything the way you do it today. Exactly no change whatsoever. That's about a 34, 33.33% increase in the fee you are paying today. And that, by the way, which I've explained, and I think in two or three meetings, is about the state average. That increase is about what we're seeing all over the state, no matter how many bidders I have. It's about a 30 to 34% increase. If you were to go to option two, you can see that the current low bid price is a little bit less. But since it calls for an investment in carts, that bumps the cost up because the carts would have to be purchased. They're obviously not free. This, again, these are the carts in front, which will let you do, play with if you want to come play with them at any time. Just come on up, see what they're like. And I would tell you, that's the same as saying, am I going to invest in a new and different system? In the third option, where we start reducing frequency, we eliminate commercial, you see the price drops again. And then the fourth option, with carts, it drops one more time. Again, very similar to three, the biggest difference is that with carts, it drops another $100,000 because of the limit, sorry, reduction in injuries to workers. So those are the deltas you're, I believe you asked for. Those are the absolute numbers. Again, your choice is, what do you want to do?
So, I don't want that on the page.
All right, so we're going to get a question from you, and then I'm going to take yours next.
Yeah, I just really don't want to play tit-tacto, but okay, that, that's a baseline delta. Average that out, norm across the residents, what's that equal to?
It would, it depends. Well, again, there are two methods of this to calculate. You don't pay for service like I pay for service. In other words, I write it No, 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 no. What I'm trying to say is I can't give you an absolute delta because you're going to pay You're going to pay some percentage of that number on the value of your home. So some people will pay more.
That's the question I'm asking.
But I can't answer that question because I, number one, I don't know the value of your home. I don't know how your taxes are going to be assessed against it. Well, again, per household, it could vary from anywhere. It's gonna vary. I mean, the numbers, again, it's not a true number. You're asking for an absolute delta on a non-absolute number. Mathematically, that's a flawed premise. In other words, if your house is worth a million dollars. This contract is costing you more than it might cost someone with a two hundred thousand dollars. You're not.
You're gonna normalize it. That's what you would do.
Let's see if I, am I explaining this incorrectly? Okay. The, who said what? I'm sorry, someone said something. I can't listen to more than one. I'm sorry, that's not your fault. Okay, let me, got, no, this gentleman was next. I'm gonna come back to you.
Hi, Luis Presco, resident. I own the business building and I have a business in town. What I think is. Missing is option two and a half. Which is you continue to service. The business community, you include carts and you go one time a week. I'm all for the. Soft and hard dollar benefits associated with the modernization of kind of how we collect trash. But it goes from. Overpriced effectively for one and two to effectively eliminating the businesses as, as any beneficiaries for the taxes that we pay. So I'm trying to figure out, I mean, I'm, I would be for two B, which is once a week, but give me a part. That, that would be something I think is a decent compromise for the business owners.
Okay, reasonable question. And one of the problems when you bid is that if you put too many options in a bid. Number one, you won't get bidders, and number two, the state does not like to see more than four options in a bid. That doesn't mean you can't. But I don't recommend it. Going to your point, however, and I, and we have a question here and then a question there. Uh, going to your point, that's not, my guess, my answer to you is, it's not an option we can consider. It's, it's either one, two, three, or four. That's it. Otherwise, we throw everything out and start all over again, and it'll be another year before we come back here again. Because that's the bidding process. And that's, that's just not enough, pardon the expression of an option, but it's not an option. I appreciate what you're saying, but it's just not something we can do.
Yeah, um, I, you just said about the value of your house. What about the number of occupants of a house? Like a house that only has one person living. They have to pay the same as a house that has fifteen people?
Well, that, that's the nature of.
They don't put that much trash in.
I, I don't disagree with you. That is the nature of public tax dollars.
Can we put this in the mix?
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, but tax dollars are based on assessed value of property. It's not something I'm assessing here, and nothing I can do about.
And do any of these not include um, businesses?
Yes. These two options?
Number one, right.
No, numbers three and four. Okay.
I can't read that.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I, I'm sorry, numbers, these two columns. Do not have commercial. At all. And so the prices are lower.
Can we find this in print online somewhere?
I think we put this up once before, didn't we? It's not on there now. Oh, it came down?
It's on the, it's on the website. That's where I got.
Yeah, okay. On the council. The short answer, the, the question is, can you get it online, Michael? You're saying we could do. That's the answer to your question.
I couldn't find it, but.
We'll, we'll get it on home.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, that gentleman in the suit? All right, sports coat?
Uh, my name is Mark. I will present Tom Liman's property around the corner, the former address store. Uh, we have probably nineteen tenants. Only one of the tenant, two restaurants, one of the tenant having a dumpster. You're the tenant technically. Um, the government pick up the garbage now. Are you gonna make regulation for? Them to have. To pay for the garbage, because I own the building. I don't own the buses, except in accounting business. I don't do garbage typically. That's one.
Okay.
Or are you gonna pass it to us as a homeowner? We currently paying for the tires, and that's the first question. The second question would be. In, in a holidays day. If you have one pickup, let's say July fourth. It's a Thursday. If you have to wait for the following weeks to pick up another garbage. You're gonna have the same thing you should to us on the screen. The garbage is gonna be overflowed. In order for you to do that. You have to maybe require them, if, if there's a holidays tomorrow. They have to pick up the garbage the next days. Otherwise, all these things you're showing here, I'm an accounting, I understand this well. But you need to make them pick up the garbage the next day, otherwise, if you have to wait two weeks and I won't pick up, you're gonna have garbage all over the floor.
Okay, so let me, let me try to answer the question first, okay, before we jump down the next question. Uh, you asked two questions. The first question is, if it's a commercial business with dumpsters, that means it's privately collected today. The commercial business is paying for that collection. This doesn't change that at all. Businesses that have private collection today will maintain private collection tomorrow. That's the first question. If I understand, the second part of your question pertained to especially if you have a holiday or something with a snow day, or. We, if we get snow ever again, but if we have a snow day, uh, what happens if that collection is missed? It would be the next morning. So even if under, even if you went to once a week collection. If a day that your collection day was a Monday, I'm just picking a day, the holiday is a Monday, which is more likely, right? Than a Wednesday. The holiday is on a Monday, your garbage will be picked up on a Tuesday. And wouldn't, you wouldn't wait for the next collections day, would be the next day. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
So now, are you guys gonna make regulation? Like, no, if you have a business, you have to pay for garbage. Because I'm gonna pass it to them anyway. But if you are purpose doing that, that'd be better.
I don't, I don't necessarily have an answer to that, but okay, I get it.
Hi, yes, um, my name is Richardson. Um, I'm a resident owner. Now. Personally, I think option three and four should be off the window. Okay? Should watch three and four, the option three and four should be up.
They should be off the table, okay.
Now, as it stands right now, to add to what gentleman said. Um, having just one collection. A month would mean. A lot of devastation with regards to the homeowners in terms of the amount of garbage that's collected. The amount of rodents that would be able to trap. And so therefore, I think that. Once a week is just not gonna cut it.
Okay, sorry, I maybe I'm confused. You said once a month, you mean once.
Once a week, sorry.
Okay.
Once a week.
I was conflating it with the bulk collection, sorry.
Once a week. And, 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 um, and I mean, normally I don't. Participate, participate in these kind of forums, but once I heard what was happening, it just, I just had to be here to just voice my opinion. That's it.
Thank you. So let me try to answer and clarify, and I'll come back. Everyone's gonna get a chance. We got plenty of time here, don't worry about it. Uh, first. Once a week collection is fairly common around the state of New Jersey. It's not common in SS County, and certainly wouldn't work in Newark or Irvington, those towns. Some towns do have it, South Orange, Maplewood, as I said, that's up to the resident. Uh, little bit, South Orange, Maplewood, a little bit like West Orange, but not completely, some parts of it similar. You have to remember one thing. If you look at the cart size. You will get more than three thirty-two gallon bags in that cart, even though that's ninety-six gallons by volume. Right, the same volume, you'll get a lot more into that cart than three bags. I've seen those loaded with five and six bags, if you work on it just a little bit, depending on what you put in, of course. The simple fact is you get a lot of volume with that. There is discussion of provision. If you needed an extra cart, the township hasn't considered that, but it's talking about it, but hasn't made a decision. That maybe that could be provided. I can give you by one example. In one community I worked with in New Jersey that converted the carts, they kept twice a week, but. They reduced the volume to sixty-four gallons, and that's it. They used to have unlimited collection. They have never had an overflow problem. They went from giving over a hundred and ninety-two gallons of capacity to sixty-four. It, uh, in that case was the two Princeton's merged. And they have a downtown that's very similar, that they don't collect commercial either, by the way, just so you know. I just lost that. So, I don't know if that answered your questions? You gotta, I, I can't get it recorded, otherwise.
What about the smell? I mean, normally, you know, having garbage for so long, especially now, the days are hotter. And, you know, and. A lot more activities in the summer, more garbage accumulation, so.
The lids tend to keep the odor down. They tend to reduce odor better, certainly better than a plastic bag, and infinitely better, whether it's once or twice a week, better than a ripped plastic bag. Even if you put garbage on a Monday for collection on Tuesday, in this heat, that bag gets ripped, it's gonna smell. And I, I don't think I have to tell you that. I think you've experienced that. In the cart. It's very rare you're going to get the odor. In my cart, as just an example, I get once a week, because I'm too cheap to pay for twice a week, because I have to pay myself. And I can tell you. When I open the lid. I know what it smells like, but I have a dog, I won't go further. Um, but with the lid down. In this heat, I don't smell anything. That's from personal experience. And believe me, if you have a dog, you know what I'm talking about.
Hi, uh, Sharon Zeinberg, resident, uh, homeowner. Uh, a couple of questions, if you don't mind. So one, are these the actual carts that if we go with a bid that requires carts, these are the cart sizes that are going to be required for the residents?
This is the cart, these are the carts that are available.
So what, what accommodations are being made with people with disabilities, the elderly? They're not going to be able to schlep these carts, I'm sorry.
What do I do with their garbage now?
They're not using these things. This is gonna be impossible for them to put their garbage in and then take to the curb. So what considerations are being done for them?
The township is considering a cart size smaller than. Uh, practice the middle part.
Right.
There are cart sizes smaller, and the town is at least looking at the possibility of offering that to people who need it on a limited basis.
And is the cost gonna be to the resident to purchase the carts, or is the town?
If it's a different size, you mean?
Yeah.
The town will be providing carts.
Second question. Who's enforcing the use of these bids?
Who's enforcing?
The use of these, when it comes to garbage day collection. Who's gonna enforce that residents are in fact using these carts and not just dumping their garbage on the ground?
The garbage won't be picked up, and that'll be a violation of township ordinance. It's gotta be in the cart to be picked up, to answer your question.
Is there a grace period of any sort?
Oh, look, this isn't something where you're gonna go out on day one. First of all, on day one, we've got to get the carts out there. It's gonna take time to get the carts. The township is going to have to do a lot of education of people if they choose that, if the township chooses that option. Work even how to make the carts work. Even the simplest thing, like, it was the way this cart is parked right now. If you're the house, so to speak, the homeowner, that's wrong. That's not the way it has to be at the curb. But that's an easy thing. There's actually a big arrow on the cart, it says this way. But that all would be part of it. And the education of, if it's not in the cart, it doesn't get picked up. That's going to take time. I can't speak to how the specific mechanic of time will work. But it will be a grace period, it will be an education period, it will be a notice period before anything happens in a way of a sudden. That's the way I would recommend it, and that's the way every town has done it. And every town that's done it that way has found it works really, really well.
I just wanted, that I currently use a trash can. And I can't tell you how many rodings I still have coming to my property with my garbage in closed lid container. So I'm not, you know, right now, I'm seeing no benefit to including it in a can.
But you are one of the few people probably do. Point is, these pictures indicate, a lot of people are putting out plastic. If you're the only person. In an area using another container, the rodents are gonna look around for everything. Just be aware of that.
My street, we all put in the containers because we live by the water. And we get rodents from the water, and they come out and they still are able to. Have a feast.
I've not seen rodent problems where I've seen carts and. Photo, I've probably seen a hundred thousand of these things in use.
Okay.
And I've not seen, I'm not saying it's perfect.
Yeah.
But it's better. That's a sixty-four, this is a sixty-four gallon cart, that's ninety-six.
Hi, Daniel Garcia, property owner here downtown. That was gonna be my question, ninety-six, uh, ninety-six, sixty-four of the sizes?
Those are two of the sizes. I couldn't get a smaller one here on top.
Okay, and what is a regular household can is about thirty gallons?
Typical garbage bag that you buy, the black garbage bags or standard garbage is about thirty, thirty-two gallons.
Okay, so I think, I mean, ideally. It, it would be great to stay with the two times per week collection, but if it's, if it's necessary to go to once per week. I think the carts become absolutely essential. Because, you know, we have, and, and a lot of the smaller lots here on Main Street especially, there is simply no room. There's no space, no land to put enough cans to accommodate. A whole week's worth of garbage for the number of residents in those properties. Um, so the carts, and ideally the bigger cart would, would become necessary if, if. If it's, if we need to go to once a week. Um, as for the commercial collection, are we looking at defining that a little bit more? Uh, specifically, I think you alluded to Nutley, that the others, there's a big difference between. The office building where we have a container and that will stay that way, and these storefronts on Main Street where, again, it's, it's the same issue. There's nowhere to put. Um, there's nowhere for the garbage to go. Uh, there's no room for a container or, and there. Would they not be allowed to use these, or would they be an exception because they're a small commercial? How would, how would we work on that?
It really depends on the option the township chooses to exercise. If it, exercise option three, let's say option four. Uh, in this case, there'd be no commercial collection period. It would be up to the business to make a provision to do that in some way. No, there's no final decision on that yet. If it was option two, where we still provide commercial, then there would be carts provided to the commercial. Uh, you alluded to another community, and Nutley, their bid, for example. Uh, is going to. If the commercial business uses carts today. I'm sorry, has curbside today with apartments above, it'll go to carts. If it's a, one of the situations where the town might pick up where there's a small dumpster. Then everybody goes to what they did. So it's a much different structure, because it's a different community with a different physical structure. And short answer is, it depends on the option that's awarded.
Okay, maybe it's more of a, a point for. For our council, but to consider that these mixed-use properties, there's just simply nowhere for these storefronts to put their garbage if it's not being collected. So if the, if the apartments are going to, to, to carts. It would be a couple more carts that would be doable, but to have no, no option at all really would be a problem for them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. You talking about, uh, like a strip mall? Well, hold on, let me get, come back to, yeah.
Hi, I'm gonna go to option three and four again. One, it feels like an alternative kind of outside-the-box tax for businesses. And two, if we go with three or four, and all residents need to use the cans, which are great, by the way. And the businesses have to do their own thing. If they have private collection, then how do you enforce a business that doesn't want to use those cans and just puts the garbage out there?
The bid doesn't. The town could do that by ordinance. But the bid doesn't do that. To answer your question, except it, it doesn't do it, Dan. Options three and four, don't, don't do that. Option two would.
Cause I love the, the. Ecological value, but if they're still throwing garbage bags out there, as a result, it kind of undermines.
It undermines the premise, I get it.
Yeah.
But that could still be done. A municipality can mandate that. Separately.
Again, the savings that we get from making the modifications here, we then apply towards enforcement.
Well, again, I go to your point. Carts are, carts are something that help keep a community clean. I can't argue with it.
Yeah, I like the carts, but I don't want to be left out in the cold.
I understand that.
Something separate.
Thank you. Sorry, you've been very patient.
Good afternoon. Um, one of your statements was, uh. In West Orange, currently we have bi-weekly pickups, right? I'm a Monday, Thursday schedule.
Twice a week, right.
Twice a week. So. When we're moving to once a week, you're saying these larger garbage cans should be able to accommodate our trash. What happens when you have an excess? Let's say you have an event and you're going to once a week. You have an event at your home, and it's only once a week, and your day is a Monday, which is my day. You're saying that they'll come in a Tuesday to pick my trash up, because that's the day that. That my current trash is, let's say, that my day was a Monday, and it's a holiday.
Oh, because of the holiday, okay, yes, go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll miss that day, you'll come Tuesday, no problem. But you're still going to have an overflow, because it's once a week you're coming. This is your proposal. My next question is. How many cans are we getting from home? Just one can, a regular garbage and a, and a recycle?
Yeah, one-on-one. That's the, that's the baseline.
And you also mentioned that. Currently, they drive around looking for bulk. Bulk day for me is a Thursday. And no one's driving around looking for bulk. They're picking up trash, and if there's bulk, they pick it up at the same time. They're not making a third trip.
What you are doing, however, is costing that, when that happens and they have to use the same truck, they're paying a higher rate to dispose of that garbage because it's charged as bulk. And therefore it's costing the town extra money by them, look, they're still having to put then three men on a crew. Because they're sending that truck to do two jobs. If bulk is by reservation, whether it's weekly or monthly, then they could send a separate truck with three people to just do those few bulk pickups versus the regular garbage. It saves the town money and cuts pollution.
But they still have the bulk. We still have whatever that bulk is. What are, what are they doing? Are we saving money because there, there's just that one extra person on that truck that day?
They are saying, you're saving money. They're not, but you're, I mean, they are and so you are.
Saving anybody because my taxes have never gone down in the twenty-eight years I've lived.
And let me, let me preface this again. Let me preface this again. First of all, I'm talking about the contract. As I prefaced earlier, this is a cost containment. No one is, I'm not going to stand here and say no matter, look, I can cut, you want me to save you tax dollars? Very easy. Throw out all the options and you all are on your own. That will save you money.
That's not an option.
I know that's not an option. I get it.
The world, it's not an option.
Well, not in West Orange, but it is an option. So as far as the, going to your other question of do you get one can, it's one-on-one. The township elected officials and the administration have to make a decision. In other, in other communities, if a person wants a second can, some communities allow that. Uh, in one community, they charge three hundred dollars a year for a second can. In other communities, they don't charge anything. It's up to your town. But you, there is nothing to per se prohibit you from getting a second can cart. If that's the direction the township wants to go. If it's because you're having a party over the weekend, some communities have made the decision, Lyndon did this years ago. If you want to throw out extra garbage, you have to pay for it. And if you're going to have a party, then use reusable service ware. I'm not telling them you to do that. I'm telling you it's up to the community to make that decision. Some communities have made that decision.
At the end of the day, I just feel that the, me, the consumer, the homeowner, we sift regardless. This is the most harebrained idea I have heard.
Which is carts for places?
Oh, so once a week. I love the cans. They're beautiful. What happens when they break? Now I have to pay an additional set of money to get a second can?
No, the carts have a ten-year warranty. If they break within ten years, they get replaced.
And the investment that you're making with the new trucks or vehicles, that's coming from taxpayer funds or?
No, the hauler has made, the haulers have these, this equipment.
The, the, okay, it's the haul. It's not coming back to me again.
No, this is what, those numbers pay for the trucks. Those numbers all pay for the trucks. You don't have to pay for them again. Now, so take a deep breath. That's at least something good.
Like I said, it's twenty-eight years and never.
I, I haven't seen my taxes go down either. I get it. Uh, and let me tell you again, you're not bound to option four. No, we're presenting, I'm presenting to you to give you information that your township is considering these options and they are looking at these two in particular. But it's not guaranteed you're going to go to once a week. I'm just telling you that. There's no guarantee.
So just, I, I know I'm, I'm nitpicking.
That's okay.
But if you pick up garbage once a week and you pick up the garbage twice a week, the tonnage is the same.
Absolutely correct.
Same amount of shit.
Pardon my language, but basically that's what you're doing. Get right to it.
Like the sewer. You move in the same crap, the same numbers.
Yes, you are.
So you really want to stay, yeah, so where I'm going with this, you really want to stay to twice a week and for reasons. I cook fish five times a week. I have to run all the goddamn garbage when I come out the back and I have one of these pails on the side of the house with a silver block on it to keep the rodents out of it.
Well, if you're putting fish in your garbage every day, I can understand that.
Well, you, you know, the bottom line is to think people have to understand that, and the point I was kind of making with that is it would be much clearer if you, it's a, it's a PowerPoint slide and you can't put everything on it. But some good things would be to explain to people that, okay, this, you move the same amount of tonnage and what the true cost of that tonnage is.
I understand. The tonnage doesn't, and you make a good point. The tonnage does not change. The reason twice a week costs more money is, and it doesn't cost a hundred percent more. Uh, twice a week to once a week usually only saves a town ten to fifteen percent because the big cost is coming the first time. Yeah.
There you go.
That is what it saves.
That's the true analysis that should be.
Well, we, and I have said that in multiple meetings and on the record, my point is, and as I said to someone in the last meeting, I don't know about you, but for me, if I could do the same thing and save fifteen percent, I'm going to go do it. You don't have to make that, your elected officials have a choice.
But do they understand that? The question is.
Oh yes, we've had lots of meetings. They're not speaking as elected officials, however.
Speaking for the elected official.
No one tonight. This is strictly for public information, but they're hearing. And, and this was presented to them at a public meeting.
I make a point.
You made it.
It's all facts.
I appreciate it.
Look at the numbers and look at what it is.
Okay.
I don't come here to waste your time or a public.
You have made your point clearly.
I think where I'm going with this is, especially the people who live in West Orange, let me also tell you something. All you people who have these expensive cars, the Germans does the wiring with key locks and the rodents like a key lock. So all your Mercedes, your Audi, you have a little problem coming.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So the one, the one question I had in none of these options did, was bulk taken away entirely. And I, I've lived in other towns in Essex County where we never had bulk pickup and if we did, we had to pay for it. So I'd be curious to see what's the savings if you just eliminated bulk altogether because I don't really think it's the town's responsibility to have to pick up a couch, a toilet or anything of a sizable nature that I'm throwing away. Like it's my, it's my responsibility. I don't throw it away.
To answer your question, that question, I mean, you can have another one, but to answer that question, it was talked about and in many communities where bulk has always been in existence, the communities just decide we're not going to take on that fight because people get too upset over it. I, I, in many communities, what you're saying is the case and it is a big save.
In your next chart where you show all the town comparisons, that doesn't.
We did not put bulk in there, but I can tell you some do not pick it up. Uh, Maplewood, South Orange, Essex Falls, Verone, I believe is one. They don't pay bulk.
If we didn't have bulk.
I can't answer that because I don't have a number.
I know, but shouldn't that question have been asked?
Uh, it was asked whether we wanted to do it as an option and the decision was made not to put it in as not.
Made that decision.
Your township. It's by consensus.
That's a fault.
Um, there's no fault. It's just that was a decision. The township, the township made that decision. It was a consensus that I made. My job was to take direction and put this together and I was told to leave bulk in. The cost savings that you can see somewhat.
But that's a big variable, right?
Bulk is a variable, yeah.
Know how much bulk you're picking up on a week.
I don't, um, I can tell you that on average, we've done multiple surveys now of towns that have at least reduced bulk to reservation, either monthly or weekly. And we tend to find less than ten percent of homes, and I'm not counting a storm or hurricane, totally different fees. Uh, we found about, uh, like I said, in one community, we went from seventy-seven hundred homes that said they had bulk to fifty-seven, that may have gone up to a couple of hundred. The highest we found is ten percent of the homes and it's, it can save money over time. I wouldn't argue with you.
I think it would save a lot of money. That's, if we don't have the.
I'll let you stand up here though with the public meeting and make the presentation because you'll be very unpopular. Go ahead.
Why would I be unpopular? Saves everybody money. So the other question I have is, you, you said that there were RFPs that were issued. How many RFPs were issued? Bulk, like how many did you send out? Twenty-two RFPs?
You mean the bids that were out? The bid was posted on the website, I believe. Don't quote me with absolute certainty, but I believe four or five companies picked them up.
Okay. And out of the four only, or five only four responded?
Three responded.
One was disqualified.
One was disqualified as non-responsive because the bid required pricing on all four options.
Well, what, how did their numbers compare to these? Just if you were to.
Well, they only bid one option.
They only bid.
So they only bid what you do today and it came in a few hundred thousand cheaper.
Okay. So at the end of the day, we have one qualified bid.
No, two.
Two qualified bids.
Well, you have one qualified low bidder. And two qualified bidders, but one qualified low bidder.
So I come from a world where we buy a lot, millions of dollars worth of packages, right? And when that happens, you start over. You cast a wider net. You can't accept two. Two is unacceptable because two says that one guy's talking to the next.
That's not the case here. I can tell you, uh, I can also tell you that New Jersey law does not allow that to happen. In, in a public, in a public bid, unless a bid is received that is outside the estimate of what the town's budget would be, the apparent low bidder, if he's qualified and the qualifications are spelled out by law, must be awarded the contract. If the township were to throw out, say, I'm not awarding any of these out and they have to give a reason. If they give a reason to just that, a resident said, I want to see another option and I'm not picking on you, I'm just saying, I wanted to see more options. The state's going to say award the contract and they're going to order it because there's no basis for rejection on the premise, you and a private company might say two prices is insufficient, but the bid laws, and I didn't write them, but they must say, if they're within the budget and they meet all the legal requirements, you must award the contract. I'm not a lawyer. I'm just telling you that's my experience.
So you brought up another, another point, which was that you could essentially also save money by either capping the amount of garbage per household, let's just say a two-time-a-week basis, right? It's sixty-four ounces, sixty-four gallons.
Sure.
Correct gallons, right?
Yes.
What is that savings if you were to go from ninety-six to sixty-four on a two-day, two, two times?
Again, we didn't bid specifically. Experientially, we've seen communities drop about fifteen to twenty percent. Now, let me rephrase that. Not from the current price. In other words, that, uh, this number is not going down. What it would mean is this number would be less.
The number from pulling up, right?
Right. You're trying to keep it, it's gonna, you're trying to keep the discount increase and not this, right? That's the goal.
Stay off the cliff.
And if you look here, from what you're paying now, if, if you, that's your goal, right? That's, that's only a one-point-three-million-dollar increase over five years. That's not bad. That's only a fifteen percent increase.
But that's apples and oranges.
Well, it's based on service that you demand. Hey, it's very simple. You want more service, you pay more money.
So the other question I have is what, what, what defines the commercial area or the commercial tenant from, let's say, the mixed-use, mixed, mixed, uh, mixed-use property on Main Street?
Yeah, West Orange has a couple of definitions. You have a special improvement district.
Because this just says commercial. So what is commercial?
The township will have to identify with its own system. They kind of went out and did a look on this. Uh, the Sid district is one. That's an easy one. Uh, then you have other businesses around. So it would be anything up to an inclusive, say, of a small, let me give you an example. Um, I shouldn't pick on the name brand, right? See if I can do this right. If you're a hot dogs, if big hot dog vendor, uh, and you have your own market, you probably have to have your own dumpster. If you're a small, um, storefront coffee shop, I'm trying to pick it without picking on anyone, uh, that you're probably going to qualify as commercial also. But anything that you sell something is defined as commercial. I don't know if that really, that, that gets hard. Let me tell you something. That gets hard in every community, just so you know. That's why many communities, and you saw that one chart, most of them to say, if you're in a commercial business making money selling, we're not picking you up.
Right.
It's an easier definition.
That's the majority, based on your list.
Yeah, all, all but two.
Except for us, one other town.
Maybe three others. Yeah.
And then the last question is how much are the carts going to cost West Orange?
Cart price, well, they have, they haven't decided to go to carts, so that will depend on two factors.
Well, but that's also.
I can give you what's on state contract. Yeah, no, no. Well, that's why, uh, net savings after cart, pre-cart, uh, depends on the size of the carts.
So just do the math.
Yeah. But I'm, so basically what I'm trying to say is carts can be purchased one of two different ways. You can bid them, which I don't recommend. It's not necessary. Actually, three ways. There's a state contract price and there's a natural, what's called a national source well price. So I've looked at some of these. The basic number for a cart delivered to each homeowner by the cart company is between six, depending on the size of the cart, between about fifty-five and seventy-five dollars a cart. That's all in. Okay, so that.
For ninety-six.
It, it fit, like I said, between fifty-five for the smaller carts, the, the cart size doesn't change the price a whole heck of a lot. But that includes for every cart delivery system I've ever seen, whether the hauler buys a cart, we buy the cart, whoever. That includes construction of the cart because they come on big tractor trailers, disassembled and delivery to every single home. Someone said earlier, you need an educational process, I think was the question that was asked. And that is so true because the cart company has to work with the town, whoever it is, to identify every single address to make sure everybody gets a cart. And that, that can be a challenge.
So just one closing statement.
Yeah.
Based on everybody's comments in this room and what the feedback you're hearing, I would ask that the administration, the town council reissue the bid based on some of our feedback and get real alternate numbers so that you have real numbers that we can all work with as a menu and choose, yes, we want this or no, we don't. But this package.
Doesn't work that way.
I mean.
Bidding doesn't work that way in New Jersey.
I do it with three-hundred-million-dollar contracts.
You're doing it in a private sector. You were not in a municipal contracting.
Oh, but, but now you're asking us to flip the bill for an eighteen.
The state does not allow a menu.
I'm just, I'm putting it out there.
Yeah, I appreciate it, but I'm just telling you it can't be done that way. I'm just saying it's, it, the state doesn't allow what you're asking for. You're asking for us to effectively pick up a, an à la carte menu.
No, I'm asking for another, another go there to add another.
You want with no bulk, you're saying? You want more options. Well, as I said, we'll be here next year talking about this then. No, because the state law requires sixty days for the office of state comptroller to review, sixty days to go to bid. We've already done this. Yeah.
These numbers should be higher.
And we could, well, I could very well come in next year at a higher bid. If, being one thing to disadvantage when you throw out a bid. No, not really. I saw that in Pat, if you want to know the truth, I saw that in Patterson. Uh, we went to bid, they threw out all bids. The second number came in twenty million dollars higher because there was no competition at that point and the bidder realized it. And the other bidder who did bid realized they didn't bid high enough and they left too much money on the table. So the numbers started to creep up. In the end, they came down, but that took a very long time and it didn't work. In another community where they went to bid three times, their bid went from two-point-two million to nine-point-nine million for one year. So you don't always get what you want. Be careful what you ask. Go ahead. I'm sorry. You've been awfully patient also. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Michelle. I'm a, um, West Orange resident. Um, what I want to say is that, um, I work in Moorestown and Moorestownship uses a car service and it actually does look really nice, you know, looks nice and clean. Um, so my question, I have a couple of questions. If, if we have a, a number of multifamily homes in this town, right?
Yes.
Will they receive one of each for each unit?
You're talking about like a four-family home?
Yeah.
Yeah, you would get four carts.
Okay, even if it's a two.
I'm picking four. Two family get two carts, three family, three carts for them.
Whatever's legally.
Well, and that's an interesting point you make. When it's a legal multifamily, in communities that converted to carts, all of a sudden, a number of illegal apartments were discovered because the landlords complained, they only got one cart and said, we're multifamily. And they said, oh, no, you're not. Why don't you come down and talk to us? And that did discover a number of illegal apartments in communities. That's a good point.
Thank you. And, um, I think this was brought up before, like some households, there are only, you know, a couple of people in the household. Some households have a whole lot of people in the household. Now, for those households, they're, of course, they're going to have more garbage. Now, if they say like, look, this isn't sufficient for, this isn't sufficient for us, what, um, will they have the option of slash purchasing slash renting another cart?
The final decision as to how to get that cart hasn't been decided, but the answer is, as I understand it, the township is leaning in that direction. Yes.
Okay. And, um, and the, the last one, the sixty-four gallon, can you just give some kind, oh, that's a sixty-four and that's a ninety-something? Is that it? Okay.
This is a pretty, I don't know. All right. So you're talking about significantly body, but then do this. So you're, you're trying to different carts and you know, that's how they're balanced. They are counterbalanced to be easy to move. Thank you. Hi again.
Um, question, uh, Essex Green.
I'm sorry, say more.
Essex Green.
Yes, shopping center.
Are they on the schedule for pickup with garbage or do they do their own garbage collection?
My understanding, they do their own.
They do their own?
Yeah.
Cause.
Big shopping centers almost always do their own for a lot of reasons.
I'm concerned about that, but here's the other thing. So I live near a park.
Okay.
And there's open trash receptibles that get filled by people who miss their garbage day. That get filled by people who miss their garbage day.
Which is illegal, but go ahead.
And so the garbage is overflowing.
Mm-hmm.
And hence the rodents. And so you had shown pictures earlier in your presentation of open receptacle garbage. The township going to then go ahead and replace all those open receptacles with closed receptacle? Like, what's, what's the plan with parks?
I, I don't have an answer to your question because it wasn't part of the bid. Uh, I know some communities have gotten grants to put in. Uh, compacting sealed containers. Uh, that's certainly something that can be looked at, those, you may have seen them, some of them are called big bellies, some of them are called, I forget, something else. Uh, and they're, they're fairly effective, but. To go to your first point. If a resident is using a litter receptacle like this. Uh, for household garbage, that is illegal. It's called illegal dumping. If they dump thirty-two gallons or more and they're caught. Under New Jersey law, the first offense is a thousand dollar fine, confiscation of the vehicle that was used to transport it in community service. Now, tough catching them.
Yeah.
And tough to enforce.
Yeah.
It has been enforced, Newark has been very aggressive at enforcing. That law over the years. And it's been on the books for a long time. Other town, you, you would have to look at that. But to answer your question, the township would have to look at that, it's not part of the bid. These will be serviced by the contractor. That are there now, the litter baskets would still be serviced under the contract. But there's, there was nothing in the bid, there's nothing for me to look at because it was nothing that was asked for. Certainly something to raise with your elective officials.
One last question. So if, if we switch to a cart system.
Yeah.
What happens with cart theft?
Good question. Uh, there was actually a cartoon in the paper today about that, but anyway. The short answer is these, the way this is designed for provision of carts. Is that the cart should be purchased with what's called an RFID tag. Um, that's a radio frequency tag. And essentially, the way these work in most communities. The tag not only has an address tag in it, so let, I'm picking an address. Uh, but they are what we call geospatially oriented. In other words, the RFID tag. Is exactly linked to where on a global map, your house would be. So if it's stolen, obviously, if it is caught somewhere else, when the truck goes to pick it up, when the hauler goes to get it. It's going to read it and it's going to say, this isn't the right part. This doesn't belong here, but it will say where it does belong. Now, will that stop anything completely? I don't know of any system on the planet that can stop anything completely. But it does help a great deal in cart theft prevention.
Just want to throw it out.
Yep. No, good questions.
Um, one more question.
Yes.
Um, I, I think one of our neighbors brought this up before. Like, there, there are certain times where you'll have like an abundance of garbage, like let's say Christmas, you have like. You know, you have people over, you have all of this garbage. And is, if we go to the once, once a week pickup, that, that's really tough. Um, how, and I'm sure we're, we wouldn't be the only people that, that have those issues. What do other towns do? Oh.
Yeah.
How do you?
Every community handles this differently. There, you know, I know that everybody wants to hear, what does everybody else do? And isn't there a standard? And don't we just all have this standard system? There's no such thing. The standard is what your community wants, and that's what this is designed to try to accommodate. The, for issue of a holiday, sometimes that comes down to. People having to adjust how they do their holidays and they may have to hold the garbage longer. In some communities, that's what they do. Hold it in your garage, you know, and, and don't do that. In other communities, they may have a special pickup structure after holidays. This bid didn't anticipate that. But that's what other communities might do. Every community does it differently.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I wish I could say they were all the same, my life would be a lot easier.
Another question for you.
Go ahead.
Uh, are there communities that are doing any, uh, composting, uh, programs?
Uh, yes, uh, there are several communities, it, it's, it's complicated in New Jersey. This goes back down to, it's very hard in New Jersey to build a compost site to take the food.
Okay.
But in West Orange, for example, there are, there is a company, I know that services here, they're not uncontracted at town anyway. Uh, there is one locally called Java Compost, I'm not endorsing them, I'm just telling you it exists. Uh, residents can hire them to come to the house every week. And pick up their food. Uh, for composting. That can be done, there is a fee to that, I don't know their fee structure completely.
Okay.
And other communities, there may be more than one, I know there are a couple startups. That are trying. They take it either to Elizabeth. Or it goes to Sussex County to a food waste composting operation.
It's rarely combined with regular trash.
We've done that in biz before, I've worked on biz with that, and the pricing we received. Uh, for the collection of the food separately was just way too high at this point in time.
The other question I have, um, were there any requirements in the RFP to provide hybrid or? Energy efficient. Vehicles to reduce.
Prohibited by state law.
Prohibited.
Because, and the reason is, because if you require that, the only companies that can provide that are large companies.
Yep, there is the.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I'd love to be able to do it, but.
I'm not, uh.
Give it to you.
I'm not telling you to redo this. But what I feel cheated of is a little bit more detail. And I think it reminds me of when I used to do planning. I used to look at the management and I'd say, Sammy, what do you want, a blue shirt or a pink shirt? And I could do an RFP.
Mm-hmm.
I'll put an RFP out there, get an RFP back, and I'm baking the blue shirt. Okay? When I look at those numbers and look at what you're presenting here, what you're basically saying to me is option A, option B. But I really want P. Just to let you know, A is over here, here's what it costs. A little bit more detail. The true cost, the value, what it will cost, I think that would help you guys to make the decision. What I think and I feel the council sometimes does is. Don't bother me with facts, my mind is made up.
Well, let me.
Oh, hold on, let me just finish. And, and so this is the public here, and I think people should understand that. That's. Need a little bit more detail to what presenting to make a decision. And if everybody's making a decision on what you have. We're making very poor decisions.
Well, let me just answer that a little bit by saying, and then the next person come up. One, this, uh, the fact is council members can't really respond to you as council members tonight. Secondly, uh, they're prohibited because it's not a council meeting, it's a public information center. Uh, the other, the other thing I just want to tell you, this is probably before the township committee. I think I've gone through three, what we were going to do, but conceptually, post what we did do. At least three, maybe four different presentations. I lost count at a certain point. So just in fairness to the township committee and to anyone else in this town and the administration. Prior to going to bid, this was discussed and presented as a couple of public meetings, as these are the options being considered. Nothing was done in a vacuum, I can say that. This has been a very public process. That's all I can really speak to on that right now.
I apologize if these questions have already been asked.
Alright.
Um. Where would the carts be located? I live on a street where there are a number of multi. Family homes without driveways.
Mm-hmm.
And they barely have space to have their regular sized trash cans stored. When they're not at curbside. So. There's no way three of those would fit on my neighbor's property.
There are two questions, it's a good question. Uh, I can tell you in other urban area, more urban setting, because what you're talking about is a small apartment type. Houses right next to each other, which we would call urban. And in Baltimore, this tends to work very well, which is about the same we are talking about. They are doing carts throughout the city, Newark is putting in carts. In Newark throughout the city slowly for their recycling at least. Uh, it, they would have to be kept depending on the structure of the building. I can't answer your question with an absolute. It would be kept, where is your garbage can today? You know, I'm asking rhetorically, I'm not asking, I don't really ask, expect an answer.
Right.
But it would have to be kept where the can is today and the township would have to move. Either in ordinance or anything else necessary to let you do that.
Yeah, I know for a fact that three of these would not fit at my neighbor's home, which is a legal three family home.
A good question. I don't have an answer, that's a good question.
Has, is a rat problem being addressed? It's horrible with two pickups.
Mm-hmm.
And the trash along Valley Street just accumulates by Luna Stage. That accumulates and it's not maintained with two pickups a week.
Mm-hmm.
We're being, I mean, rats sometimes walk boldly during the day. That's not going to get better, is it going to be better addressed?
Well, again, you're not bound to once a week, number one. Number two, the carts are one of the steps for addressing the rodents. Because carts reduce rodent problems in any community they've been used in. Carts are an effective redu- elimination. I'm not telling you there's any system in the world that can eliminate rats. But it will reduce them. It, everywhere they're being used, they have been reduced.
Alright, with, if you were to go to a one day pickup right now with two days. If our pickup day falls on a holiday, we have the second. To.
The next day you'd be picked up.
The, the, just automatically.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's true anywhere where there's once a week, by the way, whenever the pickup is on a holiday, it always goes the next day. Not next collection day, the next day.
That's probably the biggest benefit that I, in the change, is that we don't have to wait until the next, uh, business day. So I'm Megan Brill with the, uh, Downtown Alliance. And, uh, I got to spend a little bit of time with the administration and Wayne, I thank you very much for that. Um, one of the questions that I still have is, um. I was very glad to see that the town was going to pick up the garbage that's all along Main Street and in Pleasantale Center and all, all of that. That that really isn't going to change. We do have that, the problem of people dumping. Their household garbage or cleaning out their car and then throwing it in our garbage cans that are downtown, and that's probably not going to change. The thing that is of concern for us is excluding some of the business community, um, that doesn't private haul now. Um, is that they're going to pick up their bag of garbage and then throw it in a public can. And downtown is definitely going to have to watch that as well as the township. But the, I love the idea of including or going out for bid to include the smaller businesses. That are really just making, you know, a can a week or not even my husband's business, doesn't even make that kind of. Garbage in a week. But, um, so I definitely think that that's a consideration that the council and the administration should really look at. That we can't just leave the entire business community out to dry, especially. If, um, I know that we're on a month to month and this is going to have to happen probably quicker than. Uh, we would want, and maybe not as quickly as town wants, but. Um, I, I definitely like that idea, that the small mixed use properties that aren't making a ton of garbage. Um. She, we, we, we get picked up in some RFP in the future. My question, uh, for, I guess personally, the business that we own on Main Street. Is a small storefront and then three apartments above. We definitely would not need the three. Garbage cans for each one of our tenants. Um, is it tagged to the location? Or is it tagged to apartment one, apartment two, apartment three?
Geospatial to the address.
So it's, it's.
So if it's fifty-two Main Street. And there are three apartments above fifty-two Main Street, the can goes to fifty-two Main Street.
Okay, alright, um, and then just so that I understand, there are three different sizes of cans and three different sizes of recycling cans?
The recycling can is typically recommended, that's the blue one in this case, just because blue is always used for that. Uh, in a, you have a single stream collection system, which means you can put cans, bottles and paper together, right? You all, hopefully all know that.
Right.
The single stream system is almost always geared to a ninety-six gallon cart because. The fiber, the cardboard, even when you collapse it. We found in a lot of studies, anything smaller just isn't sufficient for someone to go on that for the collection, it just doesn't work.
But there's still thirty-two, sixty-four.
There, there actually are many sizes, but the three being considered, and I'm not sure what the final decision will be. Are thirty-two, sixty-four, ninety-six for the garbage. I would. Really strongly suggest you not consider anything smaller than ninety-six for single stream recycling. Because you'll find simply you don't have the capacity.
Okay, alright, and then there are strips, um, within the, you know, the downtown corridor and even all over town. That really can't handle, um, the space, and I think that somebody was talking about that. That what do we do if we can't fit? You have five stores in a strip, they don't have a dumpster.
Mm-hmm.
And, well, I guess if we're excluding them, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I mean, if you're an option four, that's not a discussion.
Okay, alright, then my last question is, can you just explain, um, about the town owns the garbage or the contractor?
Recycling, okay.
Yeah, and how that benefits.
Yeah, I should have done that and I apologize. Uh, I left that out. Under your current system. The contractor takes all the risk and if there is any benefit, any benefit to the recycling that's collected. In this day and age, in the past five to six years, it's mostly been risk and not benefit. Well, if you ask the contractor to take all the risk. Then the contractor will bump the price up to avoid that risk to the highest possible and worst possible number. What we're starting to see towns do is say, you know, the way it used to be is we owned it. And we marketed it. That would be a separate RFP we'd have to do. But the way it's working today and we're talking to facilities, I was just with all the facilities this morning. Where the risk is shared. And the reward is shared. And the pricing changes according to the market. So if next month. The market gets better, we can only hope. Then your price might go down. And so it does kind of this on a monthly basis in the market. You as a town would still prepare a budget against the worst of things because you don't want to get caught short. But when things get better, and we've seen this in other communities. Uh, one community recently went from, and a big community, they were at twenty thousand a month in cost, they dropped to ten. That's great, that's a savings. But under this option here, these options. You don't get that. The advantage of these options. Is from a budget standpoint, it's flat. You don't have to think about this at all. There's no thinking involved. This is more work, this, depending on private sector. Some private sector companies are definitely moving in this direction because of what they make. If they do a lot of cardboard. When we're doing a lot of cardboard, you definitely want this. So there's, I, I hope that answers your question. This is a little more risk. But this has higher cost.
That's it.
That's the easiest way to think about it.
And I, I guess I have two experiences with bulk pickups. We have a lot of bulk that happens downtown and especially in my neighborhood. And actually, I have the, uh, our. Disposal guy's cell phone, which is the best number to have because he, I can get him and say you missed something or you came back to get it. But I can tell you that, e- especially in our downtown neighborhood and at my home up by, uh, the, the JCC. That, um, the supervisor rides around the neighborhood, follows the garbage truck and. Or the garbage truck calls him and says, there's couch, you know, on Oak Crest Road, you have to go get it. And that's how they find out where the bulk is. Um, in addition to reservations that get called into the health department, at least that's my experience with, uh, two parts of town. Um, so.
We don't, we don't take reservations as of today.
Yeah, not for both.
Not for both, no, only refrigerators and electronics.
Last question, I promise.
Um, I don't believe you, but.
In the event that the carts are selected.
Yeah.
How are towns and residents getting rid of their existing plastic bins?
Yeah.
And is there a program where we could? Prevent throwing them into a landfill? Have you seen any?
We, we have done that. Yeah, we have done that. Um, your plastic cans, whatever you have today, if you wanted to get rid of them. Uh, they are a tip at what we, without being too nuts, it's called rigid plastic. And other communities, what they've done. Is then you have the convenience center in town on Mount Pleasant, they brought roll-offs in. Residents could fill them up and they go to a recycling market. It's not worth anything. But it has minimized the landfilling of them. It, it can be done. I don't see why it couldn't be done here if we go that route. Yes.
A couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, are these bids from new companies or? Is any of them from like the company that we use right now to?
The low, the apparent low bidder is the company you currently have.
Okay, um, because. When they pick up the garbage twice a week, the garbage and the recycling.
Uh-huh.
Especially on my block, there's always recycling and garbage still on the street and they're picking it up twice a week. So I just, I'm not convinced that if we're shifting to once a week, they're going to do a better job and make it neat, not like that. It's more like. Can in.
That's why it's on the street.
But it's like they lift the cans into, or the, the, the bins and pour in whatever falls out, they don't pick up. And so it stays. And they're doing this twice a week and they, they can't keep. It's like they can't keep up with the amount of recycling or whatever that we have now. So when you want to shift to once a week, I feel like it's going to be worse.
Again, you're not bound to once a week, number one. And number two, remember, a recycling cart is going to be lidded. And it's going to reduce what spills out. Of the truck. When you're picking up that food bucket, now granted, somebody had a pardon. Uh, when this thing was set up, but, where they drink an awful lot of water. The, that can. Like that, which is the typical recycling can.
Mm-hmm.
Right, that can, the wind blows, everything's coming out of the can.
It's not the wind, it's them.
And if they pick it up, it's gonna fall. Now, should they pick it up? I can't answer they shouldn't. Most bids require that. That's a complaint you should file. That cart, I don't care which color blue you want, you're going to get a lot less garbage and a lot less spillage. And I know from my own experience, because we have two recycling carts that we get in our community, to uh one for paper, we do it differently, but one for paper, one for cans of bottles, and almost never do I see anything on the side of the road.
Okay. I know some town, some places have like humanless garbage trucks. Is that an option that?
I'm sorry, say it again.
They have like automated garbage, so like there's not a garbage man that comes and lifts the can into the truck, the truck picks up the can and dumps itself.
That's this one here.
Sure.
That's what you're talking about. Person doesn't get out of the truck, the driver is here, he has a robotic arm. That won't work in every part of this town because of cars being parked on the street. If there's on-street parking, this truck doesn't work. If there's on-street parking, this truck works.
Okay.
Still can have a cart. It's just that they have to get off the truck to get to the cart.
Okay.
Thank you. Hello, sir.
How you doing? Uh Bill Rutherford, I'm here as a resident.
You're not wearing a suit and that's unusual for me to see.
Hey. Uh and I do have to go because the storm's coming. With regard to the carts.
Yes.
Uh and I apologize if this has already been asked. Um is the bid agnostic to where we purchase the carts from? So is there an opportunity to um you know, I you know, find another brand, another manufacturer that could possibly sell the carts at a cheaper price?
You absolutely can do anything you want to get cars from any manufacturer. All of these carts, no matter who makes them, are made to a specific standard. And the A S T M, they call it standard. And that standard says that all these carts, whoever makes them, have to be able to be picked up by every truck.
Got it.
So it doesn't matter. Uh there are four on Sourcewell, there are at least three on State Contract. These happen to be a brand called Safer. Uh the ones in that picture happen to be by Rare Rig. There's a company I P M that they're gonna, I couldn't tell you they'll look a whole lot different, but you are free to pick any cart you like.
And and uh and this is the final question for me. Is there an advantage to uh you know, one style over the other or and you know, and uh you know, that could also be cost? Uh is there a wide range in the cost or is are there other advantages?
The the only way you can range, let me rephrase that. There are two things that will add cost to these carts substantially. If you want a bear resistant cart, which they do actually make today, they're much heavier, they're very expensive. If you want a cart that has locking lids to try to keep raccoons, I I don't think they work well with the raccoons, they're pretty darn smart. But if you wanna keep raccoons out, that will add cost to the cart. We have not specified anything, I have not specified anything as to what cart design has to be other than they must meet this standard, the federal standard. So yeah, you can do whatever you like with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Question on option two, where the scenario where we have carts and twice a week pickup. Uh have you seen in other communities that have something similar? Have they considered doing, obviously not for homes, but for multifamily mixed-use property, going to fewer than one per unit? In other words, for a twelve-unit building. I mean, if you gave me twelve of these ninety six, you you know.
You don't need it.
Right, I don't need it for 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 twice a week pickup, it's too much.
Interestingly, so the the comments we've gotten so far to answer your question are, we want more carts, but there's absolutely no reason you couldn't have fewer carts.
Okay, just, I mean, it you know, it as a way to save money both on carts and and on labor. Again, this for the two-week uh twice-a-week option. Um is that something, I mean, do other communities consider this?
Absolutely. They usually let the multifamily, if it's a situation where there are carts, they have that discussion at the time they're getting ready to do the cart distribution and say, listen, I need three of these or four, whatever the number is. You know, why, why give me more than I need? Because there will be carts always in reserve. You have to order more than you need tomorrow in case they do break and they have to be held and you know repaired. Uh so no, that that's not an issue. Saying you want fewer will probably not upset anybody. Hello again.
Just a little questions. Um do all the options take into consideration yard garbage, the brown paper bags with your leaves and your yard debris?
Nothing is is in here for that because it's a separate tour, the town collects your yard debris for uh leaves and such. Otherwise, in terms of things like uh if you have grass, for example, this is not taken into account a separate collection for grass for vegetative because your current system does not take into account a separate collection for grass collection.
It does.
In a sense, only with what the town does today. In other words, this bid does not do anything with that separately.
Okay. No, but if we, I mean, we have it in the town, if you're supposed to take the the raccoons from the yard waste and stuff.
The town takes up the brush.
It gets picked up by the garbage trucks.
Yes, if it's brushed at the curb to go out for garbage, it's still gonna go out for garbage. It would have to be in the cart though. But it has to be in the cart.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I misunderstood your question, I apologize. Hi.
My name is Gerald Shire. I have business on Main Street. And I don't so much have a question for you, but rather more of a statement for the council members, I'm able to get some thoughts on it. This is not the way to support small local business. We're slowly being nickled and dimed with additional fees, taxes and existing service reductions. And for some time now, all this adds up. We pay more than our fair share through current taxes. We do not put any burden on the tremendous Board of Education budget. And most of the large and small businesses in town are very supportive of the town when they're asked for help. And all of this is without the ability to vote for who makes these decisions. Why do you think it's okay to pass this additional burden on to us? Are we prepared to handle this alone any better than the common household in town? The continued pickup of mostly one and rarely two cans of garbage should continue to be supported by the entire township. It's what's fair.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shira, I'm a resident. I just had a question. Did you guys look at the option to have two times for a week? Pickup within one week, once a month bulk to try to eliminate the cost or try to like be like a middle ground?
Uh no, that was a question that someone has been asking. Two times per week, the only option with bulk was once a week with reservation. The difference between this option two times for a week and this option, the differences are, one is with parks, your current system has no reservation component. You don't make a reservation, they just drive around, pick up the bulk as was stated earlier. The only option here was weekly by reservation.
Okay.
That did, there isn't a, there isn't a fifth option or a subset option in here to answer your question.
Okay.
I I was a little unclear on the leaf business. What do they get? Will I be able to put a bag of leaves in this and put it down?
Leaves are a separate collection that is done in the fall by the township. Leaves are collected and taken to the compost facility.
Two big huge bags of yard stuff in my front yard right now. And I know, I do, I'll just call the town and say I've got it and they'll come and get it. The question is, if I have one of these humongous things, why don't I just throw it in there? Since since I own.
Are you, are you talking about this time of year or in the fall?
This time.
Well, the the town doesn't really have, as far as I understand, it's a set mandate for brass or anything else to recycle it, right?
We just don't pick up anything in brown leaf bags. That's done by D P W only only in the spring up until like May sometime and then again.
Nothing is changing.
So I'll just put all my leaf stuff in a black.
Leaves in the, it leaves in the fall, leaves in the fall must be put out for recycling or kept on your property.
Oh, thank you.
Leaves are never permitted in the.
Yeah, leaves are not permitted in the garden.
I think I um I'm gonna see if I'm I'm helping clarify what they're saying.
Okay, thank you.
Put out leaves out to the curb, which we all know, that's part of our collection. Leaves in the fall, we put out to the curb where they pick up, you know, November, December. Then there's like yard clippings, like you mow your lawn and you have some clippings and you have some leaves. So you put that in your garbage bag and that, or you put it out to the curb and they currently come and just put it in in the truck with the rest of your garbage.
Correct.
What they're asking is, can you take those clippings like that and other little things you may have in the yard and stick it in one of those garbage cans?
Yeah, that's exactly what you're supposed to do with it. Yeah. Now, I would recommend to you, which has nothing to do with the bid, you get a mulching mower or mulch the grass and not put it in the garbage, but there is currently no mandate that you do that. Go ahead.
You have one question.
Please.
What is the timeframe for the new procedure to rule out?
To do an award? Is that what you're asking? Um it's really up to the township committee to decide if they're going to award the contract. The administration will make a recommendation. I don't have an answer for you tonight. I don't know.
Oh.
It was up to me, it'd be done very quickly, but nothing is ever up to me.
Okay.
I don't get to make decisions. Which is probably a good thing. Yep, you gotta, they can't hear you on the mic. It records you. It'll record you.
I just have not had a comment, a question, two questions. First, you weren't properly introduced. I don't, I know you've heard your name, but I don't know, are you with a consulting firm?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where where is that firm located? And then second, um I'm very interested and curious about this process. Uh we just heard for the first time that there's been multiple meetings. Uh this is the first one we heard about. So prior to this meeting, how was that advertised?
Uh I'll answer your second question first. I have nothing to do with advertising the meetings or running the town, so that would be how your town does public meeting announcements. You have to look that process up. Uh the first question, I can answer more easily since I know who I am, at least I think. Uh my name is Wayne DeFeo. I have a company called DeFeo Associates and I am a consultant to answer your question. And I'm retained often by communities to write bid specifications and take them through the bidding process.
Where where is it located?
I'm sorry, I'm in Somerset County, New Jersey. And I apologize, it was rude, I should have said that earlier.
I don't know his name, but this gentleman has said before. My name is Tercaster, by the way, I live on Terry Auburn Road, I own cash registers, I manage a lot of properties in town.
Okay.
Uh bulk. If you eliminate that, you can save a lot, but you say you didn't study, you didn't know. So how you doing your job if you can didn't do that? That's a big cost. By landlords or by the commercial people. They'll save the town a lot money. I don't mind paying for it, you know, we put a lot bulk out. We should not put a burden to others.
I can't answer your question on that other than to say bulk is an expense. Uh commercial and industrial bulk is clearly their responsibility. But bulk is an issue, right? You know, this this bid anticipates and tries to contain bulk costs in these uh these two options by reducing its frequency and requiring a reservation. And you're right, I mean, I can't answer you. It's clearly costs money to pick up bulk, there's no debate.
But you're the consultant, you should have studied that, should have presented it. You said you don't work. How come you don't do it?
Hey, because that's not what the town asked me to write a bispect. I can only write what I'm told to write for the options.
But let me just comment on that. So my position from from the administration side, Michael Fonzie, I'm the director of the health department and we oversee the solid waste contract. If we eliminated bulk with all the multifamily rental dwellings that we have in this town, there would be garbage everywhere. How would we get rid of when a tenant moves out and lines a curb up with garbage? I have one inspector right now doing the all this enforcement, we're trying to fill positions. It would be a nightmare if we eliminated bulk collection entirely. But but from an enforcement standpoint, but it it would be, it would be a nightmare. I'm just telling it. It it's it's, it would be a cost savings, but would there would be a lot of problems.
And and let me just interject here, try to keep it without going too much of a back and forth because we're not trying to have a debate, just a discussion. Every service that's cut will save money. But every time you cut something, there's a consequence, just like for every investment, there's a consequence. The decision was made to not eliminate bulk. Now, that decision has been made in many communities around the state. This is not unique. You you guys really aren't, I know you think you're totally unique, but most communities have these very same discussions all the time. And I get it, I get it. If I wanna put out bulk where I live, I pay. I have to call the hauler, pay a price and pay for it. Uh I get that. You know, but my community provides no services. You guys get an abundance of services. You may not think so, but you do. You receive a huge level of service for in this town, for this service, okay, for this service. Uh other communities don't. I don't have an answer to you because we didn't separate out the price structure.
And how do we know how to save this number of the saving?
I I can't answer your question. I don't have a number. We'd have to bid it with bulk as a separate number. I've done that in communities, but I was also tell you, it's not as accurate as you think it is because most haulers know to set that out. I don't know if I answered his question personally. I did I answer your question at all?
No, I have another question.
Oh, you have another question? Okay, go ahead.
Uh Ms. Brill brought it up about small business not creating a lot of garbage, have a mouth, a lot of multi-use buildings that don't create as much as a resident or want things of what the residents create. How do you differentiate between commercial, residential, where they put it? And how you going to enforce it?
That's gonna be up to the township to have an enforcement person to enforce that rule. Uh as I said in this chart.
The one inspector is having problems is forcing.
I I didn't write a bid for inspectors.
They cannot do it.
I didn't write a bid for inspectors. Um you know, I have recommended and I have done this in multiple presentations, that the township will have to staff up if it makes changes to do more enforcement. I've made that recommendation to Township Council and I've made it on multiple occasions. I can make a recommendation. I have seen other towns do it. It works well. I have seen other towns not do it. I can't tell you what this town will do. As far as the commercial complaint, we can see that most communities have stopped collecting commercial. It's not unusual or they've never had. If no one want, no one wants to see a cut in service. I don't know of anyone on the planet that wants to see their services cut for anything. I get that. I get that.
Would you tell me what's commercial, what's not commercial? Would you specify?
Commercial is usually defined in the bid by someone who is doing a retail establishment or wholesale establishment. There's a, there's a specific definition where it's essentially a for-profit business being sold with retail or restaurant, et cetera. It's defined out. Typically in both your ordinance and in the bid.
We have mixed use. We have closed stores, they don't produce garbage.
You have apartments above you talk.
Let me finish, please.
Hmm?
Let me finish.
Say it one more time, I'm sorry.
Let me finish.
I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were finished. I apologize. Go ahead.
Okay. There are small stores, don't produce much garbage. She have a store, she don't produce any garbage. She's my neighbor. The check has simply don't produce any garbage. You go call them commercial, they're not to get their own. It's not gonna work out because they go put in the tennis garbage. How you gonna know they put it there and how you gonna enforce it? They have four bins on the side of the building or in the back. This small business produces very little garbage. They're gonna throw it there, how you enforce it? How do you know they hired a new person to take it?
That's gonna be up to the township to work out. I mean, it's not relevant, it's not relevant in a sense of my analyzing a bid. That's up to the township to make that decision. I can't answer your question because I don't run the township.
To the top, I strongly recommend. I've been in town twenty seven years. I own a lot of business, mixed use, single use, residential. I manage a lot of properties. If you leave it the way it is and increase your cost would be much beneficial for the landlords and for everybody else on board. The way you go, you create a lot of confusion, enforcement problems. And first, who put this garbage where? There are a lot of buildings who cannot take this side of a camp in front of the building on the side, take mine. We have a hard time putting that little can that takes thirty gallon. You put this, where you going for it? I don't know. So we'll have problems. We're creating problems to solve little things, bringing big problems to town. Leave it the way it is, increase your cost and move on.
Okay.
That's the problem. Because you're right. Then we have, somebody brought about rats, mice, rodents, we have pizza place. We have restaurants, we have coffee shops, we see rats. I don't have any food. The music store don't have any food, but we see all the mice is coming all the way to us. We see them looking all over. Which twice a week, if once a week, we won't have worse problems. I recommend you don't do it, but up to you.
Again, we have two choices, so.
So the idea is to try to use this to
despite the process.
You know, the rat problem.
New York City has started mandating containerization. Many communities have.
I mean, the the pictures really tell the story.
I mean, you know, you may be ten blocks away from this. It's not gonna matter, it's disgusting. This is what's gonna hap, you leave garbage, like New York City is containerizing everything. And let me tell you, you wanna talk about a challenge? It's a challenge. And New York City rats are, I swear, I swear they're bigger than every rat on the planet, but they are moving in that direction because the first step to to control rats isn't to kill them, is to take away their food source.
Just give me one sec before you uh answer a question or ask a question. Sorry. My name's Pete Smaraldo. For the record, I'm the Assistant Business Administrator. We have less than eight minutes to go. As a public safety announcement, there's a big storm coming, so I, we wanna end at eight thirty. The other thing I wanna remind everybody is that if anybody in the audience at home or in in here, if you have any further questions, you can contact us through email at health D E P T at westorange.org. We would like to get all your questions so that we can formulate and present to the council so that when we do make the decision. So any questions you may have um or for concerns, please go to health D E P T at westorange.org. D E P T. Health, health, D E P T at westorange.org. Okay, okay. This meeting is being recorded. We will be placing it on the website, our town website and um and we will. This meeting is being recorded. We will be placing it on the website, our town website, and um, and we will, we will post that information up there for you.
And it is thanks to their weather.
We could also post, we also post. Our presentations up here. We will also post that, okay?
Just a little, if I may add. Westorange.org. This meeting and the um, presentation, Mr. DeFeo's presentation, as Mrs. Smeraldo mentioned, will be available at westorange.org. Uh, it will be posted within twenty four to forty eight hours, most likely tomorrow.
Thank you.
Ted just took the mic away from me.
I'm sorry.
When you just said the meeting ended.
No, 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 we're just, we're just, we're just making sure.
It's really raining out there.
It's raining and it's, and it's a bad, there's a very bad storm coming, so for your safety.
One final comment.
Yeah.
I am for bins. Don't get me wrong.
Okay.
But I think the analysis. Need a little bit more detail. It's somewhat flawed and skewed. And I'm not pointing fingers, but go back and look at it. You can't sell me something that you don't provide me a lot of detail with. You asked me to run. And jump off a cliff without telling me if there's water and food. I I I got a little problem with that. And again, we have a town that's nice and clean. And you know, I can do with this, but I can't do. Picking up garbage twice a week. That just doesn't work. And and to the point you made about Baltimore earlier. They did try the bulk. Where you call and make a reservation for the bulk, and they went back to. Because there wasn't enough people calling in to make reservation, they went back to put the bulk out for the garbage. So so it it plays both ways, but the the point that now I'm making is you include bulk over there, but you have no details. We don't know, and I I granted, I give you that. We don't know how much bulk is being put out on the terrace.
It's not.
You have to put reservation in automatically and then take it back off, but the rest of the analysis need. For us, for me, I think it.
Yeah, and and I will say bulk with reservation will start to give you the data you're looking for.
So five minutes. No more questions. We want to thank everybody for coming tonight, including our audience on Zoom, so we appreciate it. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you, Adon.